7:13, I'm starting the recording on the meeting of the Board of Selectmen. We have done the Pledge of Allegiance, attendance, agenda approval, where one agenda item was added, and public participation, and we're on discussion of communications. Thank you, Sarah. Marie?
Yeah, I would say a little Larry of not having the attorney respond to that letter. For that department not to go to any of us to discuss an issue is an issue within itself. And because they felt compelled to have a company attorney, there might be something in the background that we probably shouldn't make ourselves out there without some attorney advice. If you don't want to do that, my second option would be then to reach out to them, say, "We received this letter from your attorney," and put them on our agenda so we can discuss it with them if need be. They're either going to say they can discuss it, or they can't because it's under legal preview. So this way we'll get a better handle on why it's done that way.
Okay. I'd like that invite them to a meeting to discuss it. I like that suggestion.
Okay, that's what I'll do.
All right.
Our next order of business, first of all, has Attorney Adriana joined us yet? I think not. Okay. Our next item of business is resignations, reappointments, and new appointments. We do have a resignation. Mr. Kepchel is resigning as an alternate from the Conservation Commission in hopes of being appointed to a full regular member later in the agenda. Could I have a motion to accept Mr. Kepchel's resignation?
I'll make a motion to accept the resignation of Kurt Kepchel from the Conservation Commission as an alternate?
Is there a second?
Seconded.
Motion's been made and seconded. Any discussion? Seeing none? Selectmen Baker?
Aye.
Selectmen Muska?
Aye.
Selectmen D'Souza?
Aye.
Selectmen Nordal?
Aye.
Resignation is accepted. This one had been held from our last meeting because we wanted to check when the term would naturally cycle out. We've looked into that, and Mr. Kemet's appointment to the Building Commission as a regular member would rightly expire on August 1st of 2021. Apologies for the typo.
I'll make a motion to accept Stanley Kemet on the Building Commission as a regular member with his term expiring on August 1st, 2021.
Sarah Muska Selectmen, I'll second.
Motion made by Marie, seconded by Sarah. Any discussion on the appointment? Seeing none? Selectmen Baker?
Aye.
Selectmen Muska?
Aye.
Selectmen D'Souza?
Aye.
Selectmen Nordal?
Aye.
So carried. New appointments. The first one is a recently resigned member of the Conservation Commission as an alternate who would like to be promoted to a regular member. Kurt, as you may know, spent most of his career, or all of his career, working for the Connecticut Department of Energy and Environmental Protection. So I view appointing him as a member of the Conservation Commission as a wonderful role for him to fill for the town. Is there a motion to appoint him?
I'll make that motion to appoint Kurt Kepchel as a regular member to the Conservation Commission for a term expiring April 1st, 2021. I just want to say, I feel it was a pleasure that he accepted the position as an alternate. His resume and his background is what I'm looking for in somebody to sit on that board. So I'm glad he stepped forward for the full-time position.
There's a motion. Is there a second?
Seconded.
Seconded by Selectmen Baker. Any further discussion? Seeing none? Selectmen Baker?
Aye.
Selectmen Muska?
Aye.
Selectmen D'Souza? Selectmen D'Souza votes in the affirmative. Selectmen Nordal?
Aye.
So appointed. And the last appointment we have is Jamie Sadoriak as the new alternate for the Conservation Commission. Jamie is equally as impressive as Kurt. In reviewing her multiple-page application, one of the things that jumped out to me is her role as the principal editor of the Connecticut Green Plan. For those who don't know, that is a substantial body of work in the land use area. So again, we're fortunate to have people with some serious expertise who are willing to volunteer and lend that expertise to the community. So I'm excited to have... Is there a motion?
Sarah Muska Selectmen, I'll move to appoint Jamie Sadoriak as an alternate member to the Conservation Commission for a term expiring April 1st, 2021.
Is there a second? Motion made by Sarah, seconded by Alan. Any further discussion? Seeing none? Selectmen Baker?
Aye.
Selectmen Muska?
Aye.
Selectmen D'Souza?
Aye.
Selectmen Nordal?
Aye.
So appointed. Where are we now?
Thank you, folks.
I'm welcome. I was going to go out of order at this point and take up our discussion of fire service funding, but we happen to be right where we need to be anyway. I'll introduce this in topic, and then I'll introduce again to the board Attorney Adriana from Pullman and Comley. But as everyone is aware, this has been a priority for all of us since before taking office to try and find a resolution to the tax disparity issue for folks currently in the Warehouse Point Fire District. And the tact that this board opted to take was to try and develop means of funding the Broadbrook Fire Department outside of the town's general fund. I want to recognize the leadership of the Broadbrook Fire Department for their help in making this an easy process, or as easy as this process could be, for sure. I would describe it as nothing less than collaborative from the first conversation to now. And we have been certainly ably represented by Attorney Adriana from Pullman and Comley. As you all will remember, Mike was one of the experts that we brought in for the community conversation on this back in February. His expertise in municipal finance has been indispensable. And I think we have gotten to a place, my hope is we have gotten to a place where both the town and the Broadbrook Fire Department are satisfied with the final product. So I'm going to ask Mike to kind of walk us through the documents that I shared with you in an earlier email, and the process that we're going to undertake, and then we'll take any questions from members of the board. Sound like a plan? Attorney Adriana, the floor is yours, and thank you again.
Right. Good evening, everyone. Good to see everyone again. So I think what makes sense for me is first to outline what the goal is for tonight. I mean, at the end of the day, let's remember that this ordinance that's in front of us, and I'll touch on that, needs to be approved by the voters of the town. So the first step in doing that is for this Board of Selectmen to recommend, to basically approve this ordinance, but recommend it going to a town meeting for a vote. But given the importance of this, what's also going to happen tonight is that we're going to ask the board to remove the vote on the ordinance from the town meeting that right now we have scheduled for September 1st, and put it on the ballot in November, so that, you know, we'll have a good turnout, and it'll be available for all voters to vote on at the ballot. And importantly, adopting the ordinance itself is a vote of the entire town. Everyone votes on whether the ordinance should be approved or not. So that's the steps for tonight, for the Board of Selectmen to take action on the ordinance, to send it to a town meeting, and to remove the vote on this ordinance from the town meeting to the November election. The other thing in the Board of Selectmen resolution that's in front of you tonight is at least giving the ability for the town to prepare an explanatory text about the ordinance that would be available sometime between now and the election. So that's the action being asked to be taken by the board tonight. As far as the ordinance itself, and we've gone through this a little bit the last time we met, but I want to highlight a few of what I think are the more important things. One being that this new fire department, and obviously the primary purpose why we're creating kind of this town of East Windsor, Broadbrook Fire Department, is to correct kind of the tax disparity that's going on in the town. Assuming this gets approved, what will happen in the future? Taxpayers in the warehouse for fire services in Warehouse Point, and taxpayers in town but outside of Warehouse Point will be, have a... It'll be a town tax, but it'll be a separate tax on the bill that only those taxpayers will pay, which will support the Broadbrook Fire Department. So that being the case, the way we've set up this ordinance and the way we're really required to by state statute is that there will be a Board of Fire Commissioners, and this is in Section 5 of the ordinance. That Board of Fire Commissioners will be five members and two alternates. The initial board, assuming this ordinance gets approved, will be appointed by the members of the current Broadbrook Fire Department, Inc., kind of the separate non-stock entity which is providing fire services now. That will just be the initial appointment. And then, starting on July 1st, 2022, we'll go for a staggered election, which will be elected by Broadbrook taxpayers. So once we get to July 1, 2022, terms for the fire commissioners will be three years. In the first year, two will be elected. In the second year, another two will be elected. And in the third year, the last one will be elected. And that will kind of continually roll over going forward. And again, those commissioners, once we get to 2022, will be voted on by taxpayers within the Broadbrook Fire Department territorial jurisdiction. The other, I think, probably important item to highlight is how the Broadbrook Fire Department budget gets approved. It's an annual budget, and the process, the way we've set it up, is very close to how the town budget gets approved. The Broadbrook Fire Department will present a budget to the Board of Selectmen. There will be give and take there. Ultimately, the Board of Selectmen will hold a public hearing and then approve the Broadbrook Fire Department budget, send it on to the Board of Finance. The Board of Finance can make some additional adjustments, and then ultimately, it will go to a referendum vote to the voters within the Broadbrook kind of Fire Department area. And the way we've done it is, the way we've set up those votes in an attempt to kind of save the town some money, is that the vote on the Broadbrook Fire Department budget will occur on the same day as the initial vote on the town budget, that second Tuesday in May, so that we will only have to have one referendum for both the town budget and the Broadbrook Fire Department budget. And in fact, if the Broadbrook Fire Department budget gets rejected, the structure, again, is very similar to the town budget. The only thing being, because of some of the timing issues required by statute, unlike the town budget and the charter provisions, we can't go immediately to a referendum. So if the Broadbrook Fire Department budget is rejected, what we do is we have another vote the second Tuesday in June. If it gets rejected again, it gets retooled and resubmitted, and then goes to another vote on the second Tuesday in July. And if that third budget gets rejected, very similar to the current town budget, after the third budget rejection, that budget with a 2% adjustment increase will become the budget for the Broadbrook Fire Department. So we tried to set it up similar to how the town budget works, particularly with the schedule and the votes. So that is kind of the large overview of the ordinance. You know, if there's particular questions, I can answer. The only other thing I'll add is, again, this is a state statute requirement. What you're going to do tonight, hopefully, is approve the ordinance, schedule a town meeting for September 1st, and take the vote on the ordinance out of the town meeting and submit it for a ballot in November. But even doing that, we will still have to hold a very short town meeting on September 1st, where effectively we'll elect a moderator, and there will be discussion about this ordinance, but no vote. And that would be available, you know, like any town meeting. But again, no vote on it, just a discussion. And once the discussion is over, we close that town meeting, and we go to the vote in November. So that's kind of the big picture there. Again, happy to answer any questions.
Questions from members of the board?
I do have a question.
Selectmen Baker?
So this is being established by ordinance rather than by the charter, and it's being established pursuant to state statute. If there was ever a change to be made, say, you know, the town decided later on they would want to change the way the, you know, how the votes go, or, you know, whether or not it's 2%, or any of that kind of financial stuff, or really anything else about it, what would be the process to do that? Just your typical rescinding ordinance, doing a new ordinance?
My internet's a little unstable right now. I apologize.
No problem.
Okay. Selectmen Baker, can you ask that once more? I just lost you for a second there. I'm sorry.
No problem. So if we need to make changes to the ordinance in the future, and specifically with, I mean, I guess really any of it, I'm sure some of it is strictly prescribed by the statute, but the things that can be changed, what would be the process?
The process, any changes to the ordinance, we basically go through this kind of ordinance process again. So if we wanted to amend the ordinance, it would go through this same process, starting with the Board of Selectmen, and ultimately going to a vote of the entire town.
Mike, to follow up on Alan's question, would a vote of the entire town be another ballot vote? Or would a town meeting satisfy that?
You can always do it by a town meeting. I think the ballot vote, you know, Jason, we have talked, we thought made sense. One, because we have the November election coming up, and because this is such an important item, you know, kind of the first time around in setting up the Fire Department, we thought a ballot made more sense. But if down the road, as Selectmen Baker was saying, if it was a smaller tweak, maybe the 2% or something, there's nothing preventing the town from just doing that at a town meeting and not having to go to referendums.
Other questions from members of the board? Sarah, Charlie, Marie?
I'm good.
So with the board's indulgence, I would open it up for any questions, if there were any, from others on the call. So long as we stay kind of within some timeframes here, I don't want this to go too far off the rails, but I saw a couple of other hands go up, and I would invite others to ask questions of you.
I'd be happy to hear from specifically the Fire Department and any comments they might have.
Gentlemen?
Chief R. Carey, I'm going with the way it is written, Jason.
And again, I want to thank you guys, I want to thank you guys for your help in getting to this point. Just as important to me as it was to you is to preserve the culture of your department, and I think we have gotten to a place where that, and certainly we wouldn't have been if it wasn't such a collaborative process. So thank you.
You're welcome.
So if there are no other comments, counselor, the appropriate thing to do at this point would be to accept the ordinance and forward it to town meeting, correct?
Yes, yes. And in the material, I think you have, what I had set up for you is what's entitled the, you know, kind of town of East Windsor, it's a Board of Selectmen. So, you know, you would make a motion with a second that the ordinance that you all have in front of you be recommended for consideration at a special town meeting to be held on September 1, 2020, that you remove the vote on that town meeting, the vote on the ordinance from the town meeting to the election on November 3rd, and that the town be authorized to prepare an explanatory text. So really, those are the three things we're talking about now.
So do we need to read into the record the ordinance, or can we do it by reference?
I think you could do it by reference. As long as all of the Board of Selectmen have copies of the ordinance, I think you can do it by reference.
Everybody's got it, right?
Yep.
So...
Jason, sorry, I had a question regarding, we were talking about the amendments to the ordinance. Is it just, if you had to go make an amendment, is it the whole town voting, or is it just going to be the people in the Fire Department jurisdiction voting to make amendments to the ordinance?
Because it is an ordinance, and it's very clear by the charter that ordinances are adopted at town meetings, it would be by a vote of everyone in the town that would, you know, adopt any ordinance or make any changes to any ordinance.
Anything further, Jim? You good? So I'd ask for a motion. Selectmen Muska?
Sarah Muska Selectmen, I'll move to accept and approve an ordinance establishing the town of East Windsor, Broadbrook Fire Department, and recommend at a town meeting scheduled for September 1st for discussion only, not to take a vote, but have this appear on the ballot November 3rd, 2020, for a vote, and have the town put out explanatory text.
Is there a second?
Did I get it all?
That was perfect. I couldn't have done it better. Thank you.
I saw Selectmen Baker. Any further discussion?
I would just like to echo your sentiments, Broadbrook Fire Department. I want to thank them for just taking this on and getting it done so quickly, and working, as always, so well with the town. Thank you so much.
Selectmen D'Souza?
Yes, I also want, I also want to thank everyone that was involved in processing this request in an expedient, I feel is something that's needed to be done for a while now. I hope when it goes forward, the public will see the same need. And I certainly think it's time that inequity that we've been hearing about for the last several years should be taken care of. So at a warehouse, I mean, to the Broadbrook Fire Department, thank you for your hard work and efforts.
Selectmen...
Sarah Muska Selectmen, I'd like to echo Selectmen Baker and Selectmen D'Souza's comments, and thank the Broadbrook Fire Department for their work on this. And I'm glad that this is a step in the right direction to equalize the cost of fire services for all residents of town. So, and I'm thankful for this board that we took action towards this.
Thank you, Sarah.
Any further comments? Seeing none? Selectmen Baker?
Aye.
Selectmen Muska?
Aye.
Selectmen D'Souza?
Aye.
Selectmen Nordal?
Aye. Good job, everyone.
And I vote in the affirmative as well. Thank you all very, very much.
Jason, before you get off the topic, just for clarification, could you make sure that the September 1st, 2020 is in there? I believe you said September 1st.
Okay.
Yeah, it's in there.
Right. The year particularly, Jason, right?
Yeah.
2020. So, okay. I think that was intended, so we will just make sure that that's in the minutes as well. Thank you.
Yep.
Mike, do we need you for the charter, or are we good?
I think, I think we're good. Was, are we planning to take that up?
No. We're going to, we're going to discuss it, but I'm going to need to circle back with you and/or Josh for help in phrasing out the questions that are determined by the board, so that we can accept those in final form at a meeting next week. So I just want to let you know, I'm going to need some help on that.
Absolutely.
All right. Thank you again. We really appreciate it.
All right. Take care, everyone. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. The next item of business is a carryover from last time. It is discussion and hopefully establishment of a diversity council. The board had some modest concerns with some of the verbiage that was used in the original draft. I worked with the proponents to adjust that a little bit, massage that a little bit, and I think I'm where we need to be. There's a new copy of that language in your packet, so we can discuss that. And if there are no other corrections or edits to that, then we can, we can take action on that as well. Any thoughts or feedback on that? Marie?
Yes, I believe the concerns that Sarah brought up at the last meeting were addressed, and I like the fact that experience and equity in our current, our future policy and practices was changed, and I think it fits the real meaning of what we're looking for in the future. So I appreciate the effort that she put into, Ms. Rivera, who will update that for us.
Other comments? Seeing none? Sarah, are you still reading? No, you're good. Okay. Is there a motion?
Selectmen Nordal will move to establish a diversity council consisting of five, no more than nine members, who will, who shall serve for a term of four years. The council shall be appointed by the Board of Selectmen in accordance with the town of East Windsor. And I guess at this point, we will be seeking applications.
No motion is made. Is there a second?
I'll second it.
Motion made by Selectmen Nordal, seconded by Selectmen D'Souza. Any discussion? I will say, I will share that we have two applications in hand already, and a third that has requested an application. And I know that Anna also has a number of people who've expressed an interest to her. So my hope is that we won't have, won't have difficulty filling the spots. If there's no other discussion, I'll call the roll. Selectmen Baker?
Aye.
Selectmen Muska?
Aye.
Selectmen D'Souza?
Aye.
Selectmen Nordal?
Aye.
Motion carries. Okay. Is Jim Jervis on the line?
Yes, sir. Jim Jervis is here. How are you, folks, this evening?
Very well, Mr. Jervis. Thank you for joining us.
Thank you.
For members of the board, you'll recall that at the end of our last meeting... you had authorized me to approach, um, RM18 Holdings with, um, a new development agreement, or a tax abatement agreement, and in lieu of their original, um, I'll share with you that, um, I transmitted that new agreement to them, and in very short order, um, they had expressed their satisfaction with that, um, and, and returned a signed copy of it. Um, so, it is a contract between the town and RM18 Holdings. Uh, this board has reviewed the draft, and we need to now, in open session, officially approve, uh, for my signature, the agreement between RM18 Holdings and the town of East Windsor. Any discussion or comments on that? Is there a motion?
And we'd just like to say before I make a motion, I guess I'll save it for discussion. I'll make a motion. Make a motion for, to authorize the first selectman to sign the agreement between the town of East Windsor and RM18 Holdings LLC for a fixed assessment agreement.
Is there a second?
Sarah Muska, selectman, I'll second.
Moved by Selectman Baker, seconded by Selectman Muska. Any discussion? Selectman Baker.
I would just like to say, I would really like to see this finished. So, best of luck to you, Mr. Jervis. I, I hope, uh, you guys can, uh, get right on this and, and, and get this in, in production for us as soon as possible.
So, thank, thank you, folks. We really appreciate your help and working with us. We're looking forward to being a good neighbor. And, uh, I think we bring a, uh, much-needed service, uh, for our seniors in East Warwick, in, I'm sorry, I was thinking Warwick because I was there, um, in East Windsor. But, uh, I do appreciate everyone's flexibility in working with us, and, uh, we will get this project done.
Thank you, sir. Any further discussion? Seeing none, I'll call the roll. Selectman Baker.
Hi.
Selectman Muska.
Hi.
Selectman D'Souza.
Hi.
Selectman Nordell.
Hi.
Motion carries. Thank you, Mr. Jervis. I'll, I'll execute this tomorrow. I have a notary here, and, uh, transmit a, a signed copy back to you.
Okay. Thank you very much. Take care, everyone, and thank you very much for all your help.
Have a good night. Thank you, sir.
You too. Bye now.
Um, we're now going to take, and this, this one's going to take some time. Um, we're, we'll now take up agenda item 8F, which is discussion of the Charter Revision Commission's final report to the board of selectmen. Where's my notepad? So, you guys all remember, we had a rather lengthy discussion on one of the points that the Charter Revision Commission had, recommended to us a couple nights ago. Um, they opted at a subsequent meeting, as you all witnessed, to discard our recommendation. So, we now have to decide, um, not only what to do with that, but what to do with the, all of the other changes that were included in their, in their final report. So, I spent some time and went through each page of the report, and I kind of broke things down into what I see right now as nine different things to talk about. So, what we need to do is look at those changes, decide how many questions we want to have, what, um, community of interest may exist between those points, um, and what to move forward with and not to move forward with. Once you guys give me that feedback, I'll work with, uh, the attorneys to craft, um, legally objective verbiage so that we can, uh, approve questions in final form, ready for transmission to the, um, the November ballot. All that needs to happen in the next few days, um, really by the end of next week. Um, so, with that in mind, the first thing that, that I noticed, um, and there, there are probably 25 different instances of this, is what I would consider to be minor or technical changes. Those are grammatical things. Those are, uh, things like changing capitalization, adding a, adding punctuation, removing an unnecessary space, but they're prevalent throughout the document. Um, and so, we can walk through page by page. Um, actually, let's do that. Let's walk through page by page, and then I'll point out what I consider to be a minor or technical change, so, so that you all can either confirm that or not, so we have an understanding of what we're, we're talking about. The first one of those is on page eight. Does everybody have their, uh, a copy in front of them? Okay. If not, this would be an awfully painful process. So, I want to make sure that we're all looking at the same thing. In section 1.2, um, there is just punctuation added. Turning to page 10, um, the, the numeral four is added after the, the word four. That's a, to me, that's a minor change. If anybody disagrees with the significance of these, we should stop and discuss that, because that's, that'll be material. Next one is on page 16. And that's just the insertion of a comma. On page 17, again, is insertion of the, the numeral four. Um, on page 18, um, it inserts gender neutrality, which is certainly timely. On page 19, there, it looks like a deletion of a comma. On page 20, there's the deletion of a comma. On page 26, there are two things here. Um, on page 26, in sub, uh, 6-6D subsection 3, um, there, this may not be minor. So, there are, there are two things here other than minor or technical changes. The first one is the reclassification of the treasurer's title to become treasurer slash finance director. That's a different change that I think is probably not a minor or technical change. That, that's, I think, in a different category. Does anybody disagree with that? That strikes me as a material change. So, we'll, we'll keep that as a separate thing to talk about in, in a little bit. In section 6-6D3, um, this allows for the, the position to be delegated. So, it's not necessarily a direct report to the, um, to the first selectman. That is also the case in 6-6E5, and again, in 6-6G2. Those, those changes, uh, the commission made, I think, at my request, and the, the reason for that is to allow for, whoever occupies my office to design an organizational structure that works for, for them. I think it's incredibly unlikely that the treasurer or finance director, or whatever the title for that role is, would be delegated to somebody other than the first selectman. But I think it is possible that the tax collector or assessor would be, um, and most likely, most likely would be delegated to the treasurer or finance director, um, in the interest of having some organizational hierarchy within the financial services that, that the town offers. 30, there is the insertion of numeral four. On page 32, there's the insertion of a comma. On page 33, there's the insertion of the numeral four. On page 34, there's another change that I think is probably not minor or technical, and that's the renaming of a commission from the elderly commission to senior services. Although it doesn't say if it's the senior services commission, or committee, or board, or, or what have you, which is an omission, I think, there. But, that, I think, is probably a material change. Does anybody disagree with that? Okay. No. The next one is on page 35. Again, it's the, in two places, is the insertion of the numeral four. On page 37, there's a change in capitalization. On page 38, there is change in capitalization in several places. And there is correction of spelling in one place. And then there's a strike here, and I don't know what to do with that.
That, I think that was, been brought up in previous commissions, too. It's, it's a repetition of the previous sentence.
Right. Okay. So, I would consider that to be a minor or technical change then. On page 39, there is, there is a, a minor or technical revision in 8-4A2. But then there's actually some procedural changes, uh, dealing with the CIP process. So, that's different from a material, from a, a minor or technical change. That's a material change in the CIP process. Then, I'm going to stick with the minor and technical changes, and we can come back to the others. On page 43, there is a deletion of a space. On page 44, there are changes to capitalization throughout, and there are correction or deletions of spacing in at least one place. And there's a grammatical change. On page 45, I believe there, all of the changes are capitalization changes. Although there's also an error in, in numeration in the new drafts. There is no 8-5 subsection 2 anymore, which is an error. On page 46, there are changes in capitalization. And there are material changes here, speaking to the budget process that we'll come back to. And then the last minor or technical change that I identified is on page 53. And that's just the insertion of the numeral 200.
Say on 47, there's also a technical or minor, changing go-to bonded to E-bonded.
Yep, I missed that. And there's also, the, the verbiage there is cleaned up, so it reads better. But the, the intent remains the same. So, that, that probably qualifies as a minor or technical change, too. Those are the areas that I identified in my review as minor and technical changes. So, I would consider all of those to, to fall under that one criteria. Other changes that I identified throughout included the title change for the treasurer, from treasurer to, to treasurer or finance director, changing the name of the elderly commission to senior services, changing the CIP timeline to make that, uh, more in line with the rest of our budgeting process on page 39. Requiring both the board of selectmen and the board of education, um, to submit their initially prepared budgets with the town clerk at least five days prior to the initial public hearing. There's the, the budget piece about what happens after the third referendum. And then the other, uh, material change is to have the board of selectmen prepare the annual report versus the board of finance. Did anyone identify anything other than those as potential question areas? No.
Well, I guess I'm, are you talking about the non, the, the technical stuff?
Yeah.
Yeah, no.
But if there's any other changes that I missed, I, I qualified these into eight different things, minor technical, and then those other seven. I think we can change some of those things into minor technical unless there is objection to it. The changes to the CIP and timeline process, that's just changing, uh, uh, September to August, um, and lining up the submission with the, the budget recommendation or budget requirements from departments to the town. So, that's, that's more than a grammatical change, but it really is, that's a minor change. That's just a process change that doesn't affect anything other than the permission. Would anyone have any objection to that, to the CIP changes suggested on page 39, being included, included in a minor and technical changes question?
I don't. I think you should be there.
Agreed.
Sarah Charlie? Good with that?
Yep, I'm good with it.
Yeah.
How about changing the name of the elderly commission to senior services?
I do think that's also a technical thing. I mean, I mean, I, I assume that was included in there, you know, to just kind of update the language, as far as, you know, what's currently used today, rather than, you know, the word elderly. So, I mean, I guess, I, I can't see that being, how that affects anybody besides how it's referenced in the, in, in the document.
Does anybody disagree with that?
You would have to, if you're going to keep the board missing, it's going to have to be changes, your services commission.
Yeah, I don't know if we can do that. Um, that'll have to talk to, to Pullman about and see if we can do, if we can, because that's editing their final report. I don't know if we can do that. So, so let me flag that as a question to follow up on. Um, but just in terms of, of the general concept, if, if you guys are okay with that being a minor or technical change, I'll lump that in there and then have that conversation.
Okay.
I think the, um, the correction that you mentioned, Alan, on page 47, that, that to me is just a, a rewording of the, the sentence, but it doesn't have a material change. So, I would consider that to be a minor and technical change.
Agreed.
Sarah's nodding in the affirmative. So is Marie. Charlie, okay. All right. So, we'll do that one, too. How about the, how about the, the piece about the annual report? Having the board of selectmen accountable for that versus the board of finance? Standalone or minor and technical?
Is that on state statute that says the board of finance is responsible for that?
I don't know the answer to that, but I can have, I can look into it.
Um, because I thought it was, and I haven't had a chance, um, to look it up. Um, I don't have a problem with what you want to do with that, um, have the board of selectmen do it. But I think technically, it's the board of finances responsibility. So, before we put it out, I, clarification.
So, assuming, assuming that that's compliant with statute.
Yep.
Are we satisfied with that being a minor or technical change, or do we want that to be standalone?
I don't have a problem with it being minor.
I agree. I think it's procedural.
Yeah.
Sarah Charlie? Sarah Charlie.
Sarah Muska Selectman, I I mean, I I consider it a minor change, but it it I kind of think it should stand alone just because it is changing the process for something. So I don't see it as like a grammatical error or something like that. So I, although it may not have such an impact, I think it should stand alone.
Charlie.
Yeah, it's it's not, you know, it's not just a grammatical error or changing a name. It's it's really changed is who does a function. So I I think it kind of needs to be a standalone too, even though it really, you know, taxpayer wise, it's not gonna affect people really. But it it just seems like it should be a separate, its own question.
Actually, might make it easier anyway, because if if I need to check on the the statutory permissivity of that change, then if it turns out that's in violation of statute, that's easy enough to just
Eliminate.
So we'll keep that alone for now. And remember, our goal was to have three or four questions. And that's why I'm trying to to combine a number of these so that we can get to that goal. And so there's not overly confusing for voters. So with that standing alone and those things that we've identified going into minor and technical, I still have three things outstanding. One is the title change for the treasurer becoming treasurer or finance director. I can make an argument that that's a minor or technical change, but I know Sarah has a a point about the perception that that could lock us into something over time. So I would be fine with that being either in that that aircraft carrier or as a standalone.
I would recommend that it be a standalone also, only because a treasurer versus a finance director, when you go out there and you start looking at job descriptions and you look at treasurer versus a finance director, um, the salary range is quite dramatic.
Yeah, and I would agree. There's a lot of, I know there's a lot of opinions about this out there, so people should have a say on it.
Charlie, you good with that?
Yeah, I think that one should be a tone question.
Okay. So then, then there's the one on, and this this applied is is doing it separately only because I got confused in reading it. The language that's in in eight dash four D one and two. I think that, I think that's definitely a standalone question. Anybody disagree with that? I can't see how that's minor or technical. That's like, there's actually a change there.
Or D and what else?
Eight dash four D one and eight dash four D two.
Okay.
We good with that?
Yep.
And then the last one. And this is where we need to decide. Not necessarily with a vote, but in concept, whether you want me to phrase out what the the question would look like after the third referendum, or if we're not gonna if we're, if we're just gonna dismiss that out of hand. My preference would be, and I haven't decided on on how I like that in terms of actually sending it to the ballot yet, but I'd like to see what that looked like as a question. I'd like to, I'd like to work with Pullman to draft that for us to look at next week.
Yeah. We should, we should at least look, you know, like you say, see what it looks like. And and then we can decide whether or not we're gonna include it.
Marie Charlie.
I agree. Let's draft it and see what it looks like.
I also agree with that.
Charlie.
Yeah, I was trying to question it out in my head as to what it would look like. So yeah, I I think we we need it, we need it on paper so we can.
What what we'll have the next time we talk about this stuff is we will have verbiage that is legally objective. So we will have a clear understanding of, we we, the five of us, knowing what the intention of the CRC is, will have an understanding of what voters would be looking at on the ballot. And I think that's the responsible thing to do is to take a look at what the voter would be seeing. And then we would decide from there. So what is it? One, two? Three, four, five?
Five, one, two, three.
One, two. Yeah, so I'll have five questions drafted for us to look at when we meet next week. And Charlie, you you weren't, you missed the first part of this. We will need to have a special meeting on this. Probably not sooner than Wednesday. What's your availability like Wednesday and Thursday next week? In the evening, of course.
Well, Thursday, I'm good. Thursday's good, Wednesday, not so much.
I know Marie had some, had a conflict on Friday. Does Thursday work for everybody?
Yes, it works for me.
Um, I'm, I'm tentatively gonna say Thursday works for me, but we had another, um, death in the family I've just notified. Um, so I'm not sure what that service is gonna be. I got one Saturday, and I'm not sure when the other one's gonna be.
Okay.
But I'll I'll do my best to keep it, be available for Thursday.
So I will notice a meeting for seven o'clock Thursday evening next week with the questions in hand for us to to look at those five. And then we will actually be voting on whether or not to forward those questions to the ballot in in November.
Okay, I just want to question the five.
Sure.
On the name changes, we had two departments with the name changes. Are we doing both of those or one, or we're just gonna do one as a a?
What? No, we just had one name change.
Oh, okay.
So we changed, we changed the name of the elderly commission to see, the CRC changed the name of the elderly commission to senior services. And then the other name change question is the title change for the treasurer. So here, here are the five questions that'll be worded way better than this when we meet next.
Minor and technical, go ahead.
Minor and technical.
Yep.
Title change for the treasurer.
Yep.
Require both the POS and BOE to initially prepare their budgets and submit them to the town clerk before their hearing.
Yep.
What happens to the budget after the third referendum?
Yep.
And who does the annual report?
Yep. Okay.
Other questions or comments?
I'll really be curious to see how they, how they phrase question one.
Yeah.
Even make that make any sense.
Oh, that's not, that's, they can, they can do that. They do that all the time. You know, most, well, not most, many charter revisions do exactly that same thing, cleaning up punctuation and grammar and that kind of thing. They probably will do it exactly like that. Should should minor grammatical and technical changes to the charter be made? They'll have, they do a whole thing. I, that's not surprising to me at all. The one I'm really curious about is how they do the POS and BOE question and the budget question. I'm really curious how you word those. Okay. Instructions on that. Where are we now? Oh, this next one. My ducks are over. This next one, this is a contract issue as well. And this effectively what we would be doing is changing the vendor that provides our employee assistance program to the town. This came to me at the strong urging of the chief of police. Chief DeMarco's staff, I believe all sworn officers on three different occasions had called for emergency, for EAP services, and the calls went unreturned. Not, not just just acknowledged and forgotten, but actually flat out unreturned. And in the era in which we are, when the chief of police says to me that we need to change EAP providers because my officers are not getting the support that they need. That is pretty much every alarm bell going off that you can get. So I asked the chief to make a recommendation for who we should switch to. And it's Deer Oak EAP Services is the vendor that that he has selected. Not only are they cheaper than the the current people that we use, ESI, but the services that they provide are more comprehensive. I had an initial introduction with them where they went over the services that they provide, and they, I'll actually read you the notes from it, because it was just this afternoon. They provide counseling. They provide an enhanced work life model, which could include simple legal assistance, drafting of wills, stuff like that. There's a training component that's provided, and they have two different fee structures. One is a three visit model and one is an eight visit model. Because this is a cost savings to the town in total. The chief has recommended, as you see from the email attached, that the whole town go to the eight visit model. What we come back with is a dollar seventeen per employee per month. Which is like half of what we're paying now for a better service and one that provides the police department in particular the support that they certainly need. So I was impressed in the introduction that the the vendor made today. But I'm more compelled by the fact that this is important to the chief of police for services provided to that department. And I'm comfortable with migrating the whole town over onto the same vendor. So at his request, I'm putting this in front of you, asking for your acquiescence and approval for the vendor change. Any questions or comments or hopefully a motion?
Selectman Norrell will move to let the first selectmen enter an agreement with Deer Oaks EAP Services for the town of East Windsor.
Sarah Muska Selectman, I'll second.
Moved by Selectman Norrell, seconded by Selectman Muska. Any further discussion? Seeing none, Selectman Baker.
Aye.
Selectman Muska.
Aye.
Selectman De Souza.
Aye.
Selectman Norrell.
Aye.
Motion carries. I'll take care of that tomorrow. Okay, the next thing is the CIP policy. I don't know if this is just something that is done annually or not, but in our records, we can't when the board of selectmen actually approved this policy. And so because we're the policymaking board and because the CIP process, believe it or not, although we just approved their proposal last week, is starting off. It's important for this board to review the policy and decide if if there are any changes we need to make to it. If there are no changes, I'd like to make sure, just for the records sake, that the board has officially accepted this as our policy. Marie.
Um, I have a question on the on, the first that there, where it says projects must be for town owned or leased property with a cost in excess of twenty thousand dollars. Really Scott Hall for ninety nine years, released that to them. Um, the way that reads is that they could come in and ask for town dollars. Am I reading it wrong?
Yeah, no, you're reading it right. The town owns the structure, so we, if they were to request capital funding for whatever the project is, it would be an eligible project for the town to do, because it's our building, we own it.
Okay.
Sarah.
Sarah Muska Selectman, I just have a question on the section for total estimated cost accompanied by a written estimate from a vendor or contractor. I know that in the past, we have had difficulty getting estimates due to us getting estimates and vendors catching on that we're not always doing the projects. So I know that sometimes they aren't actually willing to give us an estimate. So I was just wondering how we can ensure that we can get one for every project. And if they require us to pay for estimates, do we have that ability?
I'm not aware that we would be in a position where we would have to pay for estimates.
Well, I'm just saying if we have difficulty, if a vendor won't give us an estimate on something and we have a repeated problem of that and vendors require an estimate, I mean, require a fee to actually give us an estimate, I don't know if it'll get to that point, but I just don't want us to adopt a policy that might give us difficulty down the road. A concern that I have.
So begging the board's indulgence, I'm gonna, is is Joe on? Joe Sauerroffer?
Still there?
Yeah. I've been here.
Hang on, I'm on Zoom, hang on.
I don't know, I don't know who that is, but how about Bob Leach? Bob, can you shed some light on that? You're on CIP.
I'm here.
Hello.
Yes, I'm sorry. I was experiencing IT difficulty. What can I? What can I assist this wonderful board with?
So Sarah had a question on our capital improvement plan policy. Particularly with the requirement that the total estimated cost of a project be accompanied by a written estimate from a vendor or contractor.
Okay, so I, I will tell you this, it's sometimes depending on the project, it is hard to get a written estimate. For example, every year we put in for road money. Well, Lenny and I look at the square footage, we take the market value of what we're playing for asphalt right now, we come up with a budget number of you know, what we think we need for the roads, and then that's how we submit it. As far as construction projects. Again, I mean, you know, we, we come up with, even if it's a parking lot rebuild, we come up with how much gravel we're gonna need, what the market price is for the gravel. Normally, the way we do it for the town properties and public works is we'll put a spreadsheet together and we'll put that along with the spreadsheet. Roofs are not our expertise, then we reach out to a roof vendor. It is sometimes difficult when you're asking them to freshen up the price you've been asking them for for the last four years. Sometimes you just get an, an email back from them to say, add ten percent to it. So I would believe that maybe some sort of, you know, I mean, you gotta you, you gotta, you have to do your due diligence, and I think if you can't get a receipt, at least you should be able to come up with some backup or something like that. But again, it, sometimes it's very difficult and sometimes it's time consuming as far as you know, they do push back. I mean, you ask them for something every year for five years and, you know, they know we're a town and every single town works the same.
So I think to Sarah's points, is there, is there a different way of wording?
I didn't get that. Could you try again?
Siri just went off on me. Hear me.
No, Jay.
Wording that so that we can accomplish what we're trying to get to without putting potentially in an adverse position?
Um. It's, it's, it's kind of a catch twenty two. I mean, let's, which, if Melissa's listening or listens to this tomorrow, she's gonna kill me, but look at the situation we ended up with the splash pad. You know, we came up short, we had to come back for money. That's not the way we should be doing projects, you know, of those means, but we can't get really solid, serious numbers until we know we have the money in place. I think, and with the estimates that Lenny and I do, we also do add a contingency. So we have a, you know, depending on what it is and how unsure we are with the prices. Maybe a contingency should be added in there. But then again, we're, we could be possibly overfunding a project. So I I really believe that you should stick to trying to get up to date prices because it it's a better way to do business. Unfortunately, when you get the price in December and the project gets funded in June, there still might be a cost increase. Because, you know, it material, every year asphalt, oil, asphalt's bad, I'm just using asphalt for an example, but here we go, here's lumber. Lumber, pressure treated lumber was very economical to buy up until COVID. Now it's almost doubled in prices depending on what you're buying. So, you know, but that's a situation where we'd have to come back to the board. There's no, there's no right answer here. You know, I mean, I believe that the departments just have to do their best and try to work their vendors the best they can and then when they do present it to CIP, if they don't have the hard facts. You know, there should be some sort of contingent, they should offer a contingency in that. But I would not take that out of there because you may not get good, solid numbers then. You know, I mean, you know, Ellen, I'm just throwing this out, Ellington just did a parking lot, it cost them a hundred thousand dollars, so I'm gonna say, well, ours is the same size, it's gonna cost us a hundred thousand. But if I didn't do the proper research to find out, well, yeah, but Ellington paid a hundred thousand, but their crew dug it out, their crew did all the prep work. They only had to pay for just the blacktop. Now you give me the money to do it and I'm way short, how do I come to you afterwards? So the long and the short of my whole explanation is make them continue to give you estimates regardless of how painful it is for the departments.
And if if there's a company who we're soliciting a bid from who won't provide the bid, then they're just not.
Yes, I mean, I will admit, and I do a lot of CIP. It is painful and it is a process. But we all know every year you guys are looking for it. So if we all don't, you know, chisel away at getting those prices, then, you know, there's nothing else we can do, I mean, you know, I mean, I can make you a spreadsheet and I can give you estimates, but it it's still not gonna be a hundred percent and, you know, again, I'll use the splash pad for an example. So it pains me to say it, but I think you should keep it the way it is because you'll end up not budgeting enough money.
Sarah, are you satisfied?
Sarah Muska Selectman, I understand Joe's point of having it in there. I'm just concerned that if someone, if we need a project done and we really can't get an estimate, are we still gonna be able to move forward even though they're not following this policy? If there's an exception, you know, is there an exception to it or are we just? I mean, policy should be followed, I just don't know if we're gonna have some circumstances that are gonna have some issues.
You, what if you added on the end of that, you know, by a vendor or a contractor or other qualified entity? I mean, because like in the case of, you know, doing a parking lot. Lenny's probably qualifies to give you an estimate and Joe too, nothing, nothing against you, Joe, but, I mean, Lenny's an engineer, he's probably, you know, give you a pretty good estimate, not a vendor, but so, you know, it gives you just a little bit of flexibility. Or is that too flexible? Bob wants to say something, let's hear from Bob.
Bob, you're vice chair of CIP, what are your thoughts?
I I kind of agree with Joe's sentiments that we we always wanna try to get our best and closest number that we can get to. Reality is, and Joe pointed it out, is you can't always get a an estimate. One of the things I do in my employment is I'm an estimator also. I see a lot of things across my desk and others in the, in my business anyway, from other towns. And typically, even an accurate estimate for a project that's, you know, years out, won't come. But I don't know, I don't know how you should go about codifying this language in requiring a written estimate where there's a strong possibility that you you may not get some for some projects. I don't know what you could do, where where you could solve that. But but it does exist in the industry, there's, there's some towns and companies that we just flat out refuse to waste our time on, so. I don't know, don't know what else to tell you.
So do you have, do you have a perspective on leaving the language status quo or trying to find some other way of phrasing that?
Um, I'd be interested in finding another way to phrase it. Like I said, I would like to see some type of language in there that that really puts our nose to the grindstone to make sure everybody's getting a correct number or an accurate number.
How about Alan's suggestion about inserting vendor contractor or other qualified entity?
That's a possibility. Just, I don't know what you're gonna consider a qualified entity.
It might be a little too flexible, but I mean, finding something in there.
I think the question is, what are you gonna consider a qualified entity?
Marie's got something.
Yeah, really, I mean, on CIP, what would we consider a qualified entity? It's, I I know what I would consider, but but I'm not sure others on the board that aren't in the industry, they may have no idea, so. It's a, it's a very good question.
I mean, at least at that. I'm sorry, Marie, and at least at that point in time, you have the ability to debate that. Right, like it gives you the ability to debate it, you don't, you don't have to accept any qualified entity, but you could now at least say, well, we don't, we couldn't get it for this valid reason, but we do have, you know, Lenny here in this case, you know, can give us a pretty solid estimate. Do you agree he's a qualified entity, you know?
Right, at least, at least it'll get it on the table anyway and we can discuss it, I guess.
Marie.
Yeah, I would just change it to a total estimated cost accompanied by a written estimate from a vendor contract contractor, if applicable, if not, written documentation necessary. And that would allow them to either say why they can't get it or we estimated it ourselves at this with a ten percent or twenty percent because we've got four estimates previously.
I could tell you this, I'll just have Lenny present anything I have to, I have. And I'll also let you know that I'm the one who provides them with all the numbers.
No, I just didn't want to put you on the spot as the guy that we're gonna go to to provide all our answers.
I I I understand and, and like I say, I spent many a years on CIP and I also, for even some school projects, come up with a I have an estimator, you know, I built my own little estimator program, I input the numbers. It's an Excel sheet basically and, you know, I mean, that's how we do it on some stuff, so. And mostly the the CIP committee respects where we, you know, Lenny and I come from and understand, but you know, I don't wanna disclude any other department and you know, I, you know, I mean, I mean, I'm an expert in what I do and that's it. But I I certainly couldn't come to you and tell you, yeah, a new truck's gonna cost me about two hundred thousand. You know, that's a good guess, but.
That does seem a little.
Right, you know, so I mean, but I mean, you know, in those situations, you can, I mean, the state bid, the bid list is also a very good resource where you can pull the the bid numbers right off and use those. I mean, I would think that would be an acceptable price to go into CIP for a new plow truck. You know, or a piece of equipment because we can buy it right for that price and that price contracts are usually two and three year, you know, sometimes they're even longer with the state. You know, it it's not a written estimate, but it's off the state bid list. So I think with the proper documentation, like Marie said, and, you know, with CIP, I mean, you know, those, they really grill people, let me tell you, they, you know, they get right down into the weeds and ask the really good questions. So that's my two cents.
So I think the, trying to combine the things that people have have spoken about so far. What if we were to insert if, from a vendor or contractor, if available, or other written cost verification?
I'll go with that.
That sounds good to me.
Yeah, Alan and Charlie.
Yeah, that's good.
Okay. So are there other concerns members of the board have with the policy as drafted? Seeing none, I accept a motion to accept the policy as amended.
Selectman Nordell will move that the town of East Windsor accepts the capital improvement plan policy as amended.
Is there a second?
Okay.
Any further discussion? Selectman Baker.
Aye.
Selectman Muska.
Aye.
Selectman D'Souza.
Aye.
Selectman Nordell.
Aye.
All right. Tax refunds. I'm actually surprised we have these this week since we just met last week, but here they are.
Do you like them in two separate motions or in one, because there's two pages, one dated the eighteenth and one dated the twelve?
Yeah, let's do them separately.
Okay, Sarah Muska Selectman, I'll move to approve the tax refunds totaling two thousand five hundred ninety nine dollars and sixty five cents.
Selectman Nordell will second.
Motion made by Selectman Muska, seconded by Selectman Nordell. Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor of Selectman Baker.
Aye.
Selectman Muska.
Aye.
Selectman D'Souza.
Aye.
Selectman Nordell.
Aye.
Sarah Muska Selectman, I'll move to approve the tax refunds totaling one hundred and forty three dollars and fifty four cents.
Is there a second?
Selectman Nordell will second that.
Any further discussion? Selectman Baker.
Aye.
Selectman Muska.
Aye.
Selectman D'Souza.
Aye.
Selectman Nordell.
Aye.
All right, so Carrie. Selectman's report. So whereas last week was, I think, my longest Selectman to date, this one will be one of my shortest. I'm starting to get some questions from the public about voting procedures for November's election. Some of that stuff is still being worked out at state level, but the secretary of the state will be sending out absentee ballot applications to all eligible voters in the middle of September. Anyone interested in voting absentee will need to fill out and return the application to the East Windsor Town Clerk. Will then mail out the, and our town clerk will actually mail out the actual ballots beginning on or about October second. There were a number of problems that arose during the primary with a third party mailhouse doing it and so the solution from the secretary of state's office is to put that unfunded mandate onto the town. But once an absentee ballot is received, the recipient needs to make sure it's returned and in the possession of the town clerk before eight PM on election day. Our senior center is working to survey clients about the needs for programming that they'd like to see restored. And what they would be willing to use as we consider how and when to reopen the senior center. If there's anyone who would like to add their opinion to that survey, they can call the senior center at eight six oh two nine two eight two six two. Social services is preparing their back to school backpack program. This year, we're trying to put together backpacks for a hundred and fifteen students and the department is still seeking donations of supplies or gift cards with which to purchase supplies. If anybody's willing to contribute either, please call the community services department at eight six zero six two three two four three zero. The planning department will welcome a new zoning enforcement officer on Monday. Ruth Ann Calabrese comes to the town, have served similar roles in several other communities and she spent many years also working in the public utility sector. Bringing her onboard is part of a concerted effort to institute new practices and philosophies geared towards customer service in that department and we're certainly excited for Ruth Ann to join our team. The town will be doing curbside storm debris removal from people's homes beginning the week of August thirty first. If anyone needs this service, they can call to schedule an appointment at the public works garage at eight six zero two nine two seven zero seven three. Debris needs to be at the curbside and cut in lengths of less than four feet. Today, I met with our emergency management team and leaders from key town agencies and departments to evaluate the town's response to the recent tropical storm. I reiterated to them that I was really proud of the work that they'd done during the event and that I'd heard a lot of really appreciative feedback from members of the public. We also shared some of the ideas that may improve our response process moving forward. That's all I have. Selectman D'Souza.
Yeah, I'm gonna make mine a little bit shorter. This one, I'll say, the only board that had a meeting this month, since we met last, was the East Windsor Housing Authority. East Windsor Housing Authority indicated that the bathroom project, they had contractors that attended, following all the COVID nineteen guidelines to go around and inspect the units. To go ahead for the bid process, but due to the tropical storm that we had, those bid processes are now gonna be held out until the twenty fifth. So that project is moving forward. The other thing, a lot of the tenants up at Park Hill, looking for things to do because everything's been shut down up there in the community room, whatnot. So they came up with an idea to take each one of the sections, they have three different sections up there where they would do a COVID nineteen party where they would provide pizzas for the tenants in those sections. And with the help from various businesses in town, known as restaurants, Sophia's Plaza, Sophia's Restaurant, Henry's Pizza, Main Street Grill, and contribution from Walmart. They're able to do one every week for the month of August, they've done, and they've got one more on the twenty seventh. So kudos to those businesses in town that are suffering but are still willing to give to us. So I publicly wanted to thank them. I also want to give a shout out to one of the new small businesses in town, the Carol Brand Kitchen inside the Kingsway Strip Mall, he's inside the Queensway Superstore. There's been some talk on Facebook about people not properly wearing the mask there. And he put out a video out there asking everyone in the community to please respect the COVID nineteen regulations and wear the mask before they go in, so I kudos to them. Also, another note, Starwood North has reached out to a family member that does a program for helping children at Christmas time, reached out to us because we're pleased with what happened for Christmas. If we would do something for the boys for their birthdays. A lot of them haven't had birthday parties in years, I mean, thought that that would help pull things together. The public in the local towns surrounding us, and then they're giving on a personal note. But from a business standpoint, I wanna thank, I want to get the name right. The new bake shop. I'm sorry, I just turned my paper the wrong way and I get Bake Craft and Create LLC, that's in the Basdale Plaza in Golden Irene. I'm sorry, I just turned my paper the wrong way again. Bake crafting create LLC, uh, that's in the Basdale Plaza in Golden Irene. Um, they can create, um, doing birthday cakes of each one of the residents, um, every time there's a birthday, there's an average of two or three birthdays there. So shout out to them. And a shout out to, um, Golden Irene who agreed to provide, uh, pizza, um, for their birthdays. Um, and then he's also offering to do something on a larger scale, um, at a later date over there, and he'll work all those arrangements with, uh, Soviet North. Um, so I just, kudos to everybody involved in tuning, including, um, Soviet North, um, for making those young men uh, ages 13 to 18 feel like they're part of a community. And I want to thank the community, um, for going out there and making them feel one. Um, the thank you notes that are coming from, um, the boys are heart wrenching. Um, and they really do appreciate what people have done for them. So that's all I got at this time.
Nicely done. Selectman Norde?
Nope, I have nothing since our last meeting last week.
Selectman Muska?
On Thursday, August 13th, I attended the Veterans Commission meeting, which was held at the American Legion Post 40. It was a socially distanced meeting with masks worn by all, and it was so good to see everyone in person once again. After lots of thought and discussion, the commission voted to cancel the 2020 Veterans Day Road Race. Although they wish they could, it could go on, members agreed that there is too much uncertainty as to where we will be with the pandemic in a few months. The commission is looking forward to putting on a spectacular and special race in 2021. On Monday, August 17th, the Warehouse Point Fire District held a special meeting to discuss two upcoming projects that the Board of Fire Commissioners are recommending that the district taxpayers approve for bonding. These projects total $2 million and include, in addition to the district's firehouse, Station One, and a new pumper ladder truck. There will be a public hearing held via Zoom to inform the public of these projects on August 31st at 7:00 PM. And a drive through public vote pending Health Department approval will take place on Thursday, September 3rd from 6:00 to 8:00 PM. Um, and then I did touch on the charter a little bit, but we've all discussed that. So I'll just post that part of my report on Facebook and that's all that I have. Thanks.
Selectman Baker?
Get the last word again. Um, I, I guess all I have, since I haven't had any meetings since our last meeting, is, um, you know, obviously we have the Broadbrook Fire Department ordinance that's, uh, moving forward, and I, I think we need to all make sure that we get the word out of how that's working and and, uh, make sure that a lot of people come to the September 3rd meeting. So, um, they'll be able to vote some information in their, in their heads before they go into the, into the, into the ballot box or actually before they, uh, do their mail-in vote. Um, the other thing I would just mention is with the Charter Commission, obviously, as we all know, we really didn't come to an agreement with the Charter Commission, uh, about, uh, what to bring forward. And I know that there's, I guess, from what I've been able to see so far, um, really nobody is in agreement with that change to the finance section of the, of the charter, except for the Charter Commission. Um, so I'm going to be looking for a lot of input from people over the next week or so to decide, you know, what to do about that because I'm, I'm really up in the air about how to proceed. Uh, in, in light of that fact, I, I think there was maybe other things that we could have done, and it's really unfortunate that we ended up where we did. Really disappointment to me. That's all I have for today.
Thank you, sir. Um, public participation. This is the public's second opportunity to address the board. I asked that if you're going to speak, you, uh, state your name and your address. Are there any comments from members of the public? Ms. Talamini?
Hello again, Rebecca Talamini, 34 Ry Street. Um, I have a question regarding the charter. Now that we have submitted our final report to you guys, um, does the commission get resolved? Or when does that take place? Because I know originally we said like Labor Day and that would be uh, your next meeting right before Labor Day. So I was just wondering that.
So I can't actually, I cannot answer you on that specifically right now, but I will say the statute speaks specifically to that. I just don't have it in front of me. I can't quote a chapter and verse, but I can answer in, in short order, I believe. And, and shooting from the hip, which is never a smart thing. I believe the submission of your final report satisfies your charge. But I'll check the statute and let you know for sure.
Okay, because we tend to do, tentatively do have our meetings scheduled for the first, so I would probably cancel it anyway, but just like to give the committee an update as well.
Yep.
Thanks, Jason.
You got it. Any other comments from members of the public? Marie?
Uh, yeah, I just want to, um, publicly extend my condolences to the families of Fran Keenan, Jeff House, and uh, I'm going to say her name wrong. Um, Berta, um, Nichols, Nicholson. I believe that's her last name. Um, she was the oldest person in town to run, um, the Veterans Road Race. So she's going to be greatly missed. Um, Francis Keenan served on several boards in town over the years and also, um, worked as an assessor in East Windsor. Um, and Jeff House has about 30 years' service to, um, the fire department over the course of his youth and adult. So, um, my condolences to the families.
Yeah, thank you.
Yep.
Other comments from members of the public? Seeing none? Um, we will have an executive session. Can I have a motion?
Sarah Muska Selectman, oh, go ahead. Marie got me. Go ahead. Make a motion to go into executive session at 8:50 PM.
Second.
Uh, all in favor of Selectman Baker?
Hi.
Selectman Muska?
Hi.
Selectman D'Souza?
Hi.
Selectman Norde?
Hi.
Hey, I'll catch up with you tomorrow, or you can check out the video.
Okay, um, just use, just the commission, just the board.
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you.
All right, we're back. So it's 10:03. The board's selectmen are coming out of executive session, um, taking up a potential personnel matter. Um, I'd like to ask the board for consideration of a compensation adjustment for the role of the first selectman for a couple of reasons. One is based on, and I have a presentation I'll share. One is based on about here. One is based on comparison of the position to supervisors in town. Another is based on comparison of the, the role of first selectmen in comparable communities based on size and form of government. Um, and another is based on accomplishments to date. This shows the compensation rates for supervisors in town. As you can see, my position is third from the bottom. This shows the compensation rate for supervisors who I supervise. As you can see, it's third from the bottom. This chart shows the average salary supervisor, or supervisor salary in East Windsor here. It shows the average salary of a supervisor that I supervise, and it shows my salary. In terms of comparable communities, East Windsor is most comparable in terms, oops. East Windsor is most comparable in terms of average household income to the towns of Seymour and Windsor Locks. Is most comparable in population to the towns of Windsor Locks and Summers. Is most comparable in terms of grand lists to Summers. But in, in terms of compensation, the, the position of first selectman in each of those towns, um, East Windsor ranks $13,000 below the average. Those towns that are most similar to us were $15,000 behind Summers and were $21,000 behind Windsor Locks. So the other, the other point I'd make is accomplishments since I've come into office and, and there's, the list is, I'm proud to say, still growing. I've saved the town $400,000 a year in terms of healthcare costs by converting over to the state 2.0 plan. Brought in two of our four largest taxpayers and gravel pit solar and the Silverman Group. Made infrastructure improvements in terms of traffic cameras along Route 5, improvements to the town parks. Managed to, managed a pandemic and a, a natural disaster and the week long power outage. Was hopefully resolved the tax disparity issue between voters in Warehouse Point and the, um, the other side of town. Negotiated labor contracts at, at little legal cost by doing them without, um, formal negotiations. Developed a developer's agreement to protect the town from, uh, developers welching on projects that they start, leaving town holding the bag. And in the process of rebuilding an entire department to ensure that the, the town is more customer service friendly and focused on, um, positive economic growth. So with that said, I'd entertain any questions or ask the board for consideration? Marie?
Um, with that said, um, I'd like to entertain a motion at this time. Um, I'd like to, I'd like to make a motion to increase the first selectman, uh, position from, uh, its current amount. An additional $8,500 to bring that up to $87,000 based upon, um, everything you gave in your, uh, review, um, the comparison with other towns, um, the comparison regards to, um, staffing, um, reporting queue, um, making far more than you are, um, your accomplishments, um. So I'd like to entertain that motion, um, to bring that first selectman position up to $87,000, even though, um, I think it's way too low, but I'll make that motion.
Is there a second?
Second to that motion.
Is there any discussion? Sarah?
Sarah Muska Selectman, um, I do appreciate the, the job that First Selectman Bowser is doing. However, I wish that we had discussed this at the beginning, um, with the budget cycle. Now that we're in a new fiscal year, basically one and a half, two months in, I just think that this could have been done at a different time or down the line. When he had been in office for a little bit longer. Thank you.
Any other comments?
Um, I'd just like to say that, uh, the last time that this position was adjusted was in 2011 or 2012. And so what we've seen is a lack of maintenance of this position, and that's why it's so far below the, not only the average, but really anybody uh, around us. Uh, I think that the performance of the first selectman so far has proven that, uh, has really actually paid for this. And it's proven that, uh, the position, when managed correctly, uh, is worth that kind of money. It's the, it's really, the large part of this job is, is town management, and this, this is actually even low for a town manager. But I, I think it's fair and I, I support it.
Other comments?
Selectman Norde, um, like Sarah, you know, I, I questioned the timing too, um, but I still feel that, that it's warranted, um, well deserved. And, um, I'm going to support it as well.
I appreciate the comments everybody has made. If there's no further discussion, Selectman Baker?
Hi.
Selectman D'Souza?
Hi.
Selectman Muska?
No.
Selectman Norde?
Hi.
Thank you folks very much. I really, I really do appreciate it. And I, I would just like to say how much I appreciate the support you all have given me in the time I've been in. I really do.
Thank you for everything you've done to move East Windsor forward, um, in your short period of time, Jason, you've done a phenomenal job. Um, and it's evident by 95 to 99% of the people that are commenting on it on Facebook too and in the public. So kudos to you. Well deserved. And then some.
Thank you. So I don't believe there's any other business to come before us this evening. So a motion would be in order to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn?
Selectman Norde will second that.
It's non-debatable, nor would anybody debate it. Selectman Baker?
Hi, please.
Selectman D'Souza?
Hi.
Selectman Muska?
Hi.
Selectman Norde?
Hi.
We are adjourned at 10:12 PM.